Good morning, welcome to everyone, thank you for being here, thank you for your interest in the district, and thank you for the interest in the work of this board. We'll begin with the opening invocation, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gilzine, our CEO.
All right, good morning. I'd like to introduce Father Derek Saldana for our opening prayer. Father Saldana is the pastor of St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic Church and School in St. Cloud. He was born and raised in India and has come to the United States in 2009. After receiving a business degree and working in IT, he earned his master's degree in education administration. Ordained in 2019 after studying at St. Vincent Cemetery Seminary in Boynton Beach, he served at St. John's Catholics Church in St. Petersburg. We're glad to have him here with us today. So Father, would you come and lead us in prayer, please?
Thank you for inviting me this morning. I'd just like to invite us to focus on the concept of rest. We read in the story of creation that God rested on the last day, on the seventh day of the week, and in our Judeo-Christian heritage, we keep holy the Sabbath. And this, this district, all of you who are working here for tourism, promote that rest and recreation to create strong, healthy families who come here for tourism from all over our country and the world. So let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise for this day. We give you thanks and praise that here in central Florida, we get to welcome so many people from around our country and the world as they come to engage in rest and recreation, to grow as families, to grow as a community. We ask you Lord to bless the work of everybody here as they work to provide services for these families, for the people who come here to enjoy that rest and recreation. Bless their work, bless this meeting, bless all the deliberations that are going to take place, that it may be done in a spirit of unity, of peace, of brotherhood, always focused on the people whom we serve. And we ask this in your most precious name, amen.
Father, thank you for the blessing and for your inspirational words, sir. Let's honor this great nation with the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
A pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have public comments. We have five speakers, and we had an email sent to us for public comments, and so I'll call up number one. Please state your name, and if you're here in a representative capacity, please advise us who you represent. Mr. Pete Simon.
Not here representing anyone except for the regular, everyday employees of Reedy Creek, of CF Todd. I'm a firefighter, lieutenant paramedic with Reedy Creek Fire Department. A lot of you've approached me today and asked me, made a comment about my Class A. In the fire department, we, we dress up for important events. We dress up for weddings, funerals, promotional ceremonies, pinings, and retirements, important events. Last month, a young man stood here in front of you all, wearing this uniform, to get a lifesaving award for saving the life of our brother Steve Hollingsworth. It's an important event. In the fire department, we take things like this seriously. We take our job seriously, and we have to. On any given day, when I put my gear on a fire truck, I may have to run into a burning building and save lives or property. If this building catches fire this afternoon, it's our job to show up and risk our lives to save yours, and we take that job and that risk seriously. We also take that job and that risk with the understanding that we're going to get something in return in the form of compensation and benefits. Here at the district, we are afforded certain pay and benefits in order to attract and retain employees. It is well-known that the district employees have enjoyed the benefit of park admission for Disney World for decades. This is a benefit that is made available, to my knowledge, to any third-party operating participant on property, and that is how this has been explained to me since the day I took this job. The removal of this benefit takes away some, for some, their entire reason for coming to work here. For me, when I was applying here and got the job offer, I sat down and I did a pros and cons list. My top three pros was a step plan, better insurance, because we offer here dental and vision, and the kicker for me was that I'd be able to take my family to the parks, my three little girls, to the parks. This benefit is intangible and generational. We have retirees, some of them here today, that worked their entire careers and earned this benefit for the rest of their lives. This allows me to bring my children to the parks, and eventually my grandchildren, and if I'm lucky enough to live that long, maybe one day my great-grandchildren will be able to come here, because I worked here. Everyone from brand-new employees to tenured employees to retirees, all with families. When the district changed hands last year, we were told that our jobs and our benefits were safe. The district would continue on with a new charter, a new name, a new board, and a new administration, and we welcomed that change, because we were hitting Stonewall. So we were welcome to it, right? We were promised this new administration was going to make this place better, was going to run it better, was going to get us all the resources that we've been needing, because we were getting nowhere with the previous administration. All we've seen and heard are cuts, cuts to budget, cuts to possible staffing, cuts to maintenance, and now cuts to benefits. I can't speak for the folks in the other departments of the district, but I have a feeling it's a similar story. So back to my original point about important events, this is an important event. This week marks the first brick being pulled in the dismantling of this district and the job that we all love and count on. My only question is, what's next?
Sir, thank you very much for your comments, very much for your service, and very much for honoring your profession by coming in uniform today. We feel honored for that, thank you. Number two, Andrew Hansen, if you're here in a representative capacity, sir, please tell us who you represent.
I am not here in a representative capacity, just as a local, central Florida citizen, and I come because there has been a pattern of lies and deceit that I think you really need to know about, that has been going on right here in this district. I have evidence of this, too. I have with me the La Enfant Plan for Washington DC commissioned by George Washington, our first president, in 1791. And yet, Mr. Garcia here, in these proceedings, to the media repeatedly, continues to insist that urban design didn't actually exist in the 60s, over and over again, this lie. One of the oldest books on architecture written between 20 and 30 B.C., before Christ, The Architectura by Vitruvius, chapter one includes urban planning, but apparently, this didn't exist. So either this board is so unfamiliar with their basic job of urban planning and design that they didn't know this information, or they have been deliberately misrepresenting you, this to you. I'll even leave this for you, it's only worth about 10 cents, because I know the Ethics Commission violations wouldn't be a problem for this board, would they? Even if you've had a lawyer tell you otherwise. We're told all kinds of things, there's gonna be tax cuts for the taxpayers, Disney, because Disney's the taxpayer. We all had to drive through a sign that says Walt Disney World, but taxpayers, taxpayers, payers, we're gonna do things for central Florida. Your job is to do things for your landowners, your taxpayers, for Disney. You say you're gonna cut taxes, but it's not taxes you control, that you levy. You're gonna cut services that you don't provide. How about I announce that you're gonna give everybody in this room money? I don't control that, but apparently it's cool to like speak for other people and make financial obligations for them. We're told they need to do the district's business, that they need to provide affordable housing, but there was never public debate and discussion on adopting this need for affordable housing. And what business is there? State law in Florida is that public housing can be developed in commercial and mixed-use spaces. If you raise a comprehensive plan, almost the entire district is commercial and mixed-use spaces. The landowner is allowed to build as much affordable housing as they want here. So unless you plan to either destroy the headwaters of the Araglades and put public housing there, or try to eminent domain land from Disney and build socialized housing, because you're not allowed to sell it to a developer, what exactly are you gonna do? Or is it just more lies, like you told the firefighters? Your benefits are fine, oh wait, no, it's not. Police, maintain law and order, safety, actually, we want other people to stop paying the police, we want to defund the police. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Next is number three, Ms. McDonald, Debbie McDonald, and if you are here today in a representative capacity, please tell us.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. My name is Debbie McDonald, I'm a citizen of Osceola County. I'm here to address the board about the spiteful nature of the most recent cut to benefits. The 400 employees of this district work hard to maintain this area that millions of tourists visit every year. Naturally, our families come and visit us to enjoy the parks as well. These people run towards danger, not away from it. They are some of the best in the country that have come here to work for Disney World and Reedy Creek. While the governor says the war against Disney is over and he's ready to move on, it seems to be just beginning, and it is the employees of this district that are caught in the crossfire. How many have resigned? These were quality, excellent employees, most are either looking for other jobs, retiring early, or miserable. Instead of focusing on rolling up its sleeves and doing its job, the board is hurting its employees. Already, turnover in this district office is high, now dissatisfaction will spread. To the board members, including District Administrator Glenn Gazan, remember, an eye for an eye makes the world blind. You are fighting a battle for a governor whose candidacy is going nowhere, and we, the people who have to live and work here and don't make more than $1,000 a day, are the fallout. This whole idea that the taxpayer money was siphoned off by Disney is a talking point entirely made up by highly-paid political strategists. The district has spent millions on legal fees fighting Disney, literally biting the hand that feeds them, but they have to punish the common man to get back at the mouse in a battle that doesn't make any difference. But they have to punish the common man to get back at the mouse in a battle that doesn't make any sense. Manufacturing headlines is not your job. It is your job to maintain this district and said, you're all in the business of exacting political revenge for the governor, moves that are distasteful and perhaps illegal. Taking away park access is a low blow. We all know working on property historically has meant that park access is not an issue. It's a given. It's disappointing. I respectfully ask the governor to do his job and to you also to focus on what matters, what truly matters. We have real issues in our communities. Crime, homelessness, educational needs in our schools, rising insurance costs among a few. Where is our governor? Fighting Disney. Glenn and I met and talked about establishing Osceola County Advisory Group to look at issues in the community. I don't know if that's still going forward, but I did contact, try to contact you and I guess your assistant has also resigned. So if you could let me know after the meeting who to contact to get in touch with you, that would be great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments and thank you for working with Mr. Gilzine on that community effort. Next is number four, Aaron Clark. If you're here in a representative capacity, please tell us who you represent.
Good morning. I'm speaking on my own behalf of my family. My name is Aaron. I worked for the fire department here for six and a half years. I would like to speak today in the heartfelt desire to keep our annual passes and the other perks that come along with working here and that have for 51 years. I feel like I can speak to this topic from a unique perspective that only a handful of people here have. I can only think of two others. My father worked here as a firefighter paramedic for 26 years. And with that, he earned a lifetime pass for his dedication to the department. This has been a generational benefit that I was able to have growing up. I have decades of wonderful memories coming to Disney parks and staying at the Disney resorts throughout my childhood. I now have three girls of my own, six, three and one. When entering this field, my goal was to become a firefighter with Reedy Creek. And one of the biggest draws was the chance to be that dad that was able to make those same memories that I was able to make with my dad. I vividly remember getting the job offer to work here and barely being able to control my excitement at what that was going to mean for my growing family. Along with those passes are a lot of benefits, such as the hotels, which I was able to use three times this summer with my girls. Most fire departments are very local. You work where you live. This department is very unique as we have people coming from Jupiter, Fort Myers, Tampa, Ocala, Daytona, from all over the state. They were attracted here and one of the main things that attracted them here was the park passes for our families because otherwise it's simply unaffordable. I just wish, I, I hope that you would all reconsider. We could find a solution that would still allow us to be able to have that benefit for our families. I know I'd be very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and thank you for your service and your father's service. Next is number five, Ricky Clark. And again, if you're here in a representative capacity, sir, please tell us who you represent.
My name is Ricky Clark and I'm a retiree from the fire department. And you just happened to hear from my son. And it's just odd that we are both here at the same time for this reason. But anyway, I worked here at the formerly-known Reedy Creek Fire Department for 26 years. During my tenure, I enjoyed a job that offered me a good work environment, perfect, no. But I was proud of where I worked and I loved being a firefighter, paramedic and helping people in need. During my time here, we were guaranteed a longevity benefit of lifetime pass after 15 years of service. This is a benefit that my family has enjoyed for years and that I feel I rightfully earned. And to think that this benefit is in jeopardy is very disturbing. To think that this benefit is in jeopardy for any employee is disturbing. My family made many wonderful memories visiting the parks and spending quality time together, memories that cannot be replaced. And now my son works here at the fire department and is wanting the chance to give his family the same opportunities that I was able to give to mine so that they can make their own memories. With the retirees and the current employees, we all worked hard and have given and are still giving their best because we think highly of our profession. Not just anyone can do what we do. It is a special calling. And it seems that this current board is doing everything possible to dismantle what has already been agreed upon for the current employees and the, what was earned by the retirees. And I understand the governor's issues with Disney. I do. But the Reedy Creek employees have had nothing to do with this. So I'm asking you to reconsider removing the annual pass for the current employees and the lifetime pass for the retirees that I feel was rightfully earned. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir, and thank you for your service to the district. I believe there are no more public comments. I think it'd be appropriate at this time for me to respond to some of these comments. And let me first address the firefighters. As you know, the, the old board was in negotiation with the firefighters, trying to come up with a contract for five years. This board has only been on the job for six months and we were able to bring that to a conclusion. And I believe it was a favorable conclusion. And we negotiated with the union. As you know, unions provide collective bargaining services for their members. They charge them for that. They are very, very capable at negotiating. They're tough negotiators, I know, because I, I was part of that. They also hire very capable counsel, labor counsel, to negotiate their contracts. And we have a contract and it's, and it's, it's a very good contract. And we got a letter from Mr. Shivey earlier in the week addressing some of the same issues about these benefits. And so we contacted our counsel and said, you know, what's the deal with, with the benefits in terms of the firefighters? And what we were told is that during the negotiations between the capable lawyer for the union and our capable lawyer, that this issue came up, okay? And that there is a provision in the contract that addresses that. And so we will rely upon our lawyers to tell us what we're obligated to do and we're going to do what the contract says. But in terms of the firefighters, you had really capable legal counsel negotiating on your behalf and that was an issue. And then, and so the contract will determine what it is with respect to the firefighters. Now, with respect to the change in policy, I've read some media reports and a number of them have been inaccurate and I don't think that anything was intentional. I just think they don't have all the facts and don't have the full perspective of this policy change. So let me see if I can nip some of that in the bud. So there's really three reasons why we felt that there needed to be a change in policy. One, we felt that the policy discriminated in favor of one business in the district and against others. Two, we felt that the policy was inequitable with respect to our employees. And we've come up with a solution to address that. And then three, we felt like the policy had the potential of endorsing what would be an unlawful policy. And let me address those. So with respect to the policy that's being changed, the old policy was that the, the board that was appointed essentially by Disney was paying $2.5 million a year to Disney for passes to be given to our employees. And so the benefit was exclusive to one taxpayer in the district. It wasn't a pass that the employee could take to a non-Disney business and say, I've got a $1,000 pass or $2,000 pass and I'd like to use it at a non-Disney restaurant or, or business or a non-Disney hotel. So it was a policy that was created in favor of one taxpayer and, and not in favor of others. And of course, all the taxes are paid by all the taxpayers. And so we felt that, that that really wasn't fair. And then two, with respect to the employees, some employees that had large families gained a, a larger benefit. So if you had several family members, the pass that, that would be in paid for would be worth up to $3,000 or more dollars. If you were single, it was worth less than $1,000. And what we also looked at was to see if these passes were being used by everybody. And clearly, those who are here today use the passes. But we looked and found that in some years, only 30% of the employees use the passes. Other years, it was 50%. And I think the highest utilization was 67%. So we were paying as a district or the old board was paying for passes that some of our employees weren't even using. And so we said, how do we provide a more equitable solution to this so that it's fair and applied equally to everybody? And so what we decided is that we would gross up everybody's wages by $1,425, okay? And that was evaluating that some people weren't even using these passes. Some people were getting a benefit below that amount to the tune of about $900. And clearly, some were getting a much higher benefit, but it wasn't fair. So we came up with $1,425 that we're grossing up everybody's wages that are employees in the park. Now, is that the right number? We don't know, okay? If with further information, we learn that that number needs to be grossed up higher, we're going to gross it up higher. If we learn that it needs to be reduced, we're not going to reduce it. And so that's why we started at $1,425. So we are trying to equitably replace the policy that we've eliminated and trying to be as fair as we can to everybody. And I assure you, we will continue to evaluate whether $1,425 is fair to everybody. And then finally, let me tell you the other problem that it was creating. A, a private company cannot give gifts to government workers that provide services for them or have authority over them for obvious reasons. And many of the people that were receiving these passes had the notion, and by the way, it's been reported in the media, that these were, these passes were being provided free by Disney. Well, that, that is clearly unlawful in Florida, okay? Disney cannot provide free passes to government employees that are providing services to them or have authority over them. And so we wanted to eliminate that concern. The, the one group that we haven't yet formulated a policy is with respect to retirees, okay? And that's something that we need to go back with our CEO and evaluate. And so some people are going to make out better with the $1,425 in terms of the, the employees. Some people aren't going to do as well. And $1,425 may not be the right number to be equitable to everybody and we will continue to revisit that. With respect to the firefighters, we're going to rely upon the contract that, that the union capably negotiated and their capable counsel negotiated and that the issue did come up. So whatever that contract obligates us to do, I promise you, we're going to do. And now we'll move on to, by the way, we didn't do a safety minute, did we? So let's do that now.
Hello, good morning. We'll start, thank you Chairman, members of the board and welcome guests. In the unlikelyness of an emergency evacuation, there's two exits, one right here and the other one through this door. We just ask that you make your way through, through the front entrance and where you came through. Our main exit is in the front of the building. There's also an exit in the rear. Our, I'm sorry, there is also an exit at the rear of the building. Please follow the exit signs and your nearest exit in an orderly fashion. Our employees will also be evacuating and making their way at the ends of a parking lot. Follow them to the area so we can gather and grab an accurate number of people until first responders arrive. In the unlikelyness of a medical emergency, we have an automated external defibrillator and also a first aid kit at the security desk. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. And next, the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that it passes unanimously. Hey, I should have done this at the beginning. I understand that one of our board members is attending by Zoom. Bridget, are you with us?
I am with you. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about not checking earlier.
Not a problem.
Okay, next, management reports. Mr. Gilzine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. At this time, I would take the privilege on addressing my resignation as Chairman of the Florida Commission on Ethics. It has recently come to my attention that my position as District Administrator of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District may not be compatible with my position as a member and chairman of the Florida Commission on Ethics. After reviewing the matter with legal counsel, I have decided that prudence dictates that I discontinue serving in one or two positions. Therefore, I respectfully tendered my resignation from the Florida Commission on Ethics. While serving as a member and chairman of the Florida Commission on Ethics, I was committed to safeguarding the standards of conduct for officers and employees of the state of Florida. I am proud of our work and will always be grateful for the confidence that the governor demonstrated in me by affording me the privilege to serve. It has been one of the greatest honors of my life. The work of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District is extremely important to me and to the people of Florida. There is still much to be done and I'm fully committed to seeing it through. With that said, I will proceed on to the first order of business. At this time, I would like to call up our fire chief, Richard LaPere. It's bittersweet to announce, come on up, come on up. It's bittersweet to announce the well-earned retirement of our fire chief, Richard LaPere Jr. Chief LaPere started at the district 24 years ago. If that wasn't impressive enough, his career in the fire service spanned across four decades. Congratulations, chief. Well wishes to you and your next chapter. I would like to have Deputy Chief Eric Ferrari come up and say a few words.
Good morning. My name is Eric Ferrari. I'm the Deputy Fire Chief. I've had the pleasure of serving as Chief LaPere's deputy chief for the last 10 years. And I'd like to just share a few words about him because many of you in this room know him, but some do not. Chief LaPere is an absolute professional. He's a master at his craft. He's loyal to his team. And to top it all off, he's just got a wonderful personality. The staff has enjoyed serving under his leadership. We've learned a lot. This gentleman before you is an absolute master at his craft, as I said. He knows the fire code inside and out. And besides that, he is the epitome of what a community fire chief should be. You cannot go somewhere within this district boundary with Chief LaPere and not run into somebody that walks up and shakes his hand and knows him as the fire chief. He's in these buildings. He's been involved in projects. He knows his community and they know and cherish him, which is a testament to his professionalism, his knowledge, respect, service to his community. And, and frankly, we're going to miss him. Some of you do not know Chief LaPere well. I would tell you that the staff are going to miss his steadfastness. He and I, over the last decade, and the other deputy chief who was out sick today, have dealt with many situations. And he's navigated through some turmoil in the department. And we pushed through the other side. We've been on difficult incidents together, newsworthy incidents together. And, and all the while, I've been by his side and he's been an amazing mentor. I could not be more fortunate and blessed to work under his leadership. On behalf of the 200-plus brave men and women that have served under his leadership in the last 10 years, we wish him well on his retirement. And it's, it's going to be tough because he is also a good friend of mine. He's been like a brother to me, like a, and a good mentor to Chief Joel Edwards and I. And it's going to be different coming to work without him in the, in the chief seat. So I thank you, chief. So, I thank you, Chief.
Just a minute, though.
A minute. Yeah, everybody knows what that means. A man of few words, I've never been accused of being. It's an honor to receive this from the board today, from Mr. Gilzine, from my staff. Working here at Reedy Creek has been, uh, a, a unique privilege. And like anybody else, I feel like I'm, I've been very successful. But a man is not successful on his own. There are key people that have helped me along the way, and without them, uh, I wouldn't be here today. Uh, the, the, the first credit goes to the Lord Almighty. I've, I've felt his hand, uh, easily guiding me along the way. Uh, sometimes, I've felt his foot kick me swiftly in the pants. It's a, it's something that, it's a blessing that's been given to me, and I cherish that. For nearly forty years of my service in the fire department, there's been a person that's been along my side, and she can't be here today. I, I know she's home listening. It's my wife, Danae. I love her dearly. She is the real fire chief in my family. She's been my mentor and my therapist, and she's provided comfort and everything that I potentially needed. And, uh, any of you that have firefighter families, you know that, uh, we are not easy to live with. There's, there's a lot of stress in a firefighter, law enforcement families. I love her dearly, and I thank her. To my staff, all these men and women that are back here, it's been a pleasure to, to be able to work with all of them. It's been a pleasure to hire Aaron Colburn, whose dad served as the fire chief before me, another legacy in the department. Mr. Clark, whose dad served here before me. Um, many other people that are legacies within our department. That's a testament to our fire department and to this district. If people want to come here, when you, when you recommend your family and you bring your family to the place you work, it says something about where you work. This is a great place to work. To all of the assistant chiefs in the fire department, they have supported the fire chief and the district and the wishes of the board, whoever they may be, because we have a job to do. Our job is to serve the citizens and the constituents of this district, and they do that to the best of their ability. That's the number-one thing that they all do. Every person in this room, this entire group of firefighters back here, the ones sitting down there, bargaining unit personnel, management personnel. Our mission has always been the same. It doesn't change, no matter who the board is, who our leaders are. We are here to do a job, and that's what's important. Follow your leader's wishes and get the job done. I know you all will do that. I have an incredible day staff. Chief Molton, Chief Painter, who are sitting here. Our shift commanders, Underwood, Nadler, Smith, Chief Flores, I'm missing one. Chief Barrios is a shift commander, uh, Assistant Chief in Fire Prevention. Marcel Juhasz, they're all here, they're all capable personnel, they do a good job. Continue to support them in their mission. I apologize for anybody that I, I'm not able to mention. I do wanna keep it brief, I promised Mr. Gilzine. But all of your assistant chiefs are capable, all of our battalion chiefs are capable, all of our personnel are capable to, to do an excellent job, and they do that. That should never change at Reedy Creek. Lastly, but not least, my, what I call my inner circle, right? My, my three amigos, really, two amigos and an amiga. They are steadfast, they are loyal, and they are honest. And that is something that a leader, i- i- it's indispensable to have that. I don't care about their abilities at that point, they've already proved their abilities. It's their honesty and their commitment. I trust them with my life. I trust them with my family. I trust them with the work that has to be done here in the district. They have been loyal to, to the end. And I'm speaking about Deputy Chief Eric Ferrari, Deputy Chief Joel Edwards, and Assistant Chief Tanya Naylor. They're experts in their own field. Tap into them as a resource, utilize them. They will help continue to make this fire department successful. Next Thursday, when I leave, will be the last time I leave as the fire chief. I know I won't be forgotten, but some people will be as happy as I am that I'm leaving. I wish them the best also. I'm okay, I'm okay with that. My time has come and gone. I'm okay with being Pepe Who a few days after that. I will not forget any of you. You, you're, there are, there are friendships and things that I remember that will stay with me for the rest of my life. I've had the pleasure of getting to know a lot of these people's families, their wives, their children. I've watched them grow up, I've watched them come and visit their dads and their moms at the fire station, and they become a great reference for me. If I have to take some kind of action, I know it's not only some firefighter that I have to deal with. It's that firefighter's wife or husband, it's that firefighter's children. That's a great temper for me, to, to hold me back, give them the benefit of the doubt, and, and, and get them through where they need to be. You have a terrific fire department here. Utilize them, take care of them, and I guarantee you, they will take care of you. Thank you, all of you. You have contributed to my success and my career, and I will not forget you. I couldn't have done this on my own. You all are a part of it, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Chief, on behalf of the board, I wanna thank you for your long and very valuable service to this district. You are a good man. Thank you, sir.
Our second order of business, how do you, how do you go after that, right? Like, wow. Again, Chief, thank you. So, our second order of business is the semi, semi-annual easement report. Per Resolution Number Five Six Five, the district is required to report all information to the District Board of Supervisors and the public related to the executed easements from January twenty twenty-three through July twenty twenty-three. The details have been provided in the meeting packets for public examination. Onto the next order of business, I would like to call up Mr. Wendell Gardner, Senior Manager, Director of Prag, to provide us an overview of the Ralph Tillis Project. Following Mr. Gardner's presentation, Mr. Terry Bonveri, Vice President of Ralph Tillis, will come up to share additional information before we present the labor agreement to the board for approval. Mr. Gardner, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. As you know, the district runs a very complicated utility system. It provides electric, water, sewer, reclaimed water, solid waste, natural gas, chilled water, and hot water services. And labor is generally composed about twenty percent of the revenues of the utility. RCS operates the utility on behalf of the district, and has provided their operational fee and design support fee for the upcoming fiscal year as required under the Labor Service Agreement. They also provided a detailed report showing their estimated staffing needs and operational needs of the utility. The staffing is consistent with the current year, and it's below the high of fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Uh, but in order to, uh, understand the numbers behind the staffing levels, the district engaged Ralph Tillis to review the labor service cost relative to the proposed staffing levels. So, at this point, I'm gonna turn that presentation over to Ralph Tillis and Terry.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, my name is Terry Bovary with Ralph Tillis. Thank you for having me today, and thank you, Wendell, for the introduction. Um, if we could move forward, I have a brief presentation for you, about fifteen slides or so. We're gonna touch on the scope, the project status, uh, where we're at in our evaluation. We're gonna run you through our approach and methodology, and then we're gonna close with our findings on the study and where we're at. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, as part of our scope, we were tasked to evaluate several different elements, um, as it relates to the utility district. Uh, we were trying to evaluate the annual and long-term strategic plans, the proposed utility rates, the power purchase agreement, and the operational fee and labor services agreement. Um, we're hoping that, you know, within the next thirty days or so, we'll be coming back with some more information on the other scope items. Today's discussion is gonna focus on the operational fee and the labor services agreement. Um, I do wanna mention here that, uh, you know, we had worked closely with district staff and RCS staff, and wanted to thank them for their help in providing us all the requested information and, uh, the number of different, uh, interviews that they had to inter with us as we were trying to probe about their process and better understanding, um, how RCS and the district come about, uh, that, uh, the budgetary process. And, you know, I think from our review of that, it seems pretty comprehensive in line with what we see with other utilities that we work with. Um, although that wasn't the primary focus of, uh, this evaluation. And, uh, so if we go to the next slide, I think I can segue here a little bit. Our approach to sort of evaluating the reasonableness of the proposal was to, uh, do a benchmarking evaluation in effect. And, um, to assess that, we, you, we looked at, uh, the information that was available to us. Um, and we're gonna talk, I'll talk on that in, in a little bit more detail. Um, but, uh, as Wendell mentioned, there was a, a significant amount of data available for, uh, salary on skilled tradespeople, um, and information that we were a little benchmarked to. Next slide, please. Uh, I apologize, the font's a little bit, uh, small here. Um, but there were three primary approaches to the methodology. One was to evaluate the market and, underlying market and economic trends, um, surrounding the labor services agreement. And I should mention that, um, the, the current labor service agreement, a substantial number of the costs, the substantial amount of the costs associated with, uh, union agreements that RCS has with their own staff. And that agreement was entered into in two thousand and twenty-two, and that agreement's valid through two thousand and twenty-six, with, uh, stated increases and, and, uh, co- you know, compensation increases around four percent, uh, per year. And that accounts for, uh, over seventy percent of the total cost, uh, for the, uh, labor services agreement. The other element that we looked at was to compare wage data with relevant industry association data. And we also attempted to evaluate relevant Florida utility peers, um, although our sample size was small, and we'll touch on that momentarily. Next slide, please. So, this gives you a, a breakdown, I mentioned the seventy-one percent figure or so for the frontline skilled tradespeople, uh, is what we really focused in on the most, um, as demonstrated by the, um, pie chart here of the total cost breakdown of, uh, the labor services agreement. Um, we, uh, excluded salary professionals administrative support, um, uh, since we were focused more on, uh, what we could benchmark and compare to on a, on a better basis there. Um, and we, um, exclude, uh, non-wage, uh, data as well. Um, if we can go to the next slide, please. Here's a overview of, of the benchmarking data sources. So, as far as industry associations, we look to the American Waterworks Association, the, uh, American Public Power Association, American, uh, Public Gas Association for guidance on, um, you know, uh, expected wage ranges. Um, we also benchmarked to Fort Pierce Utility, Lakeland, and Tampa. Um, some of these utilities, uh, Fort Pierce and Lakeland in particular, have electric operations, um, on a municipal side, as well as, um, water and sewer service. Uh, Lakeland also has solid waste services. Tampa has water, sewer, solid waste, uh, service, uh, to help us benchmark there. Uh, we looked at some information for Hillsborough County, not listed there, uh, but didn't have complete information, so didn't, uh, list them on the slide. So, uh, our findings. Um, as, as it relates to the market and, uh, economic observations, I, I don't think that this is gonna come as a surprise to many of those here. We find there's low, um, unemployment, uh, within the country right now, um, at three-point-five percent nationally. And within the state of Florida, it's, uh, right around two-point-seven percent. So, uh, the point here is that, you know, underlying this, um, you know, there, there's, uh, low unemployment, which can drive the need for, um, higher wages and an inflationary, or a low employment environment like that. The next point is that, you know, we've observed high inflation. Um, you know, more recently, it's moderated, but if we look from twenty-one to twenty-two, we're eight, nine percent overall on CPI, uh, Consumer Price Index. And, uh, if we look, uh, year over year, um, I think that it was about four percent in May for the national average, and it's now down closer to about three-point-five percent. But, uh, do keep in mind that, um, you know, the, the labor services agreement, again, uh, is based on union contracts that were established in two thousand and twenty-two. So, um, I think that, uh, you know, we, we are seeing higher inflation than maybe even what was contemplated at that time when that agreement was, um, being, you know, being negotiated between RCS and the union folks. Um, you know, we've seen, you know, based on the national data, um, for actual and projected wage increases, they align with the greater of one dollar or four percent wage increase, um, as identified in the RCS, uh, labor agreement. Um, in one of my final slides, I've got a table that I'll be touching on that shows about, um, uh, from the FY twenty-four, from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four budget, about five-point-four percent increase in the operational fee, um, from RCS. That's a little bit higher than four percent. Um, however, uh, you know, we do consider market adjustments, and I'll touch on that when we go through the benchmarking. Um, and, and this is, uh, the last point here sort of alludes to it, is that, um, you know, uh, we're finding this to be true, not just in utilities, but in a lot of other sectors, difficulty in finding skilled staff to, uh, fill vacant positions. Um, there, there's a few underlying trends there. One is that, um, you know, we have a lot of folks that are nearing, approaching retirement age. Um, it's important to mention, too, with RCS, the average tenure is about seventeen years for district, uh, district employees, uh, serving in this labor services agreement. Next slide, please. If, if we examine, uh, some of the industry benchmarking, and we look at the different, um, job titles, and we try to compare a salary range midpoint, um, between, uh, RCS, uh, and the average industry salary midpoint, uh, what we kind, what we find is that it's generally aligned, and in some areas, um, it's notably below. Um, there were three categories, but I highlighted in bold the electric power system and the operator engineer system. Um, based on, uh, discussions with, um, RCS staff, uh, they were having difficulty in hiring, um, professional like, electrical professionals to fill those positions. I think that's anecdotal evidence of, uh, the need for a market correction in that particular category of labor. Next slide, please. Uh, when we examined the same information for the peer group, uh, we found sort of similar trends. Um, and as you can imagine, um, you know, utilities, uh, uh, may be in the same boat in terms of, uh, reacting to the steep rise in inflation that's occurred. So, they could be a little bit behind, um, the mark in, uh, adjusting and correcting for that. And in some cases, are being forced to when they're having to fill the positions if they need to fill those positions. Um, so, I don't think it's a surprise that, uh, you know, the, the ranges here are a little bit different. Um, you know, in, in the sense that you have, uh, several where the RCS salary midpoint might be a little bit higher. But, um, again, reminder that, uh, you know, the staff tenure is higher here as well. Um, and also that, uh, this, um, that, that the peer benchmarking did support the other finding from the, from the industry slide regarding the, uh, operator, um, related to the energy systems. So, be, being below. So, if I could just, um, conclude here on the next slide. Uh, the table to the right demonstrates the operational fee, as well as the design support fee, uh, being proposed. And I wanna touch on those, and then I'll run you through sort of the key, uh, takeaways. Um, it's a five-point-four percent increase. Uh, over about twenty-five percent of the operational fee increase is due to market adjustments. Once you adjust for that, uh, instead of it being five-point-four, it might be closer to four percent. So, um, the reason why it's higher than that is primarily because of the market-based adjustments. Um, the, uh, design support fee, what, what that, uh, goes to do is to help with, um, engineering, design, and construction management through the execution of the CIP, uh, the Capital Improvement Plan. And, um, projected for FY twenty-four is, uh, a little, you know, close to about forty million dollars. And the proposed fee is, um, roughly, you know, nine percent or three-point-five million dollars. Um, that's, uh, definitely within range of what we see, um, as it relates to those types of services being built into capital improvement plans when we're working. being built into capital improvement plans when we're working with other utilities across the state and around the country. And generally speaking, engineering services alone are, you know, rough planning estimate would be ten percent just alone for that, not including the construction management. So we think on that basis, it's fairly reasonable. We think, you know, I mentioned the tenure, talked about the key points here in the observations. I mentioned the tenure, you know, on the profession, on all the professionals that work for RCS. I mentioned that, you know, the observation was that the electric professionals seem to be below market, requiring the adjustment. You know, given that, I think that it supports the five-point-four percent, and that if we think about it, as the subpoint note is noted, estimates around seventy-seven dollars per hour based on the implied number of hours. I wanted to point out that the, the cost that's billed by RCS based on our evaluation back to the district is based on actual hours, so to the extent that, you know, you don't incur that labor, you don't bill it. Another point of fact from our evaluation was that, you know, RCS maintains a project management type billing system, if you will, like how, for me, I'm a consultant, every project I work on, I have to track it based on the project that I work on. They similarly have a similar system to keep track of how they're spending their time in the field and the job for all the various utilities. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that when we get into a more detailed dive on our evaluation in about a month or so. We think that the market and economic trends support the salary actions that are proposed by RCS. And that concludes the presentation and our key findings to the valuation. The last point I would like to make is just that, as I mentioned, my name is Terry Bovary. I'm the project manager for this engagement. We have a number of people from our firm that are assisting due to the expedited nature of the work that we're doing. Unfortunately, couldn't be here today, but to the extent that you have questions that I'm not able to address immediately, I'll get with my team and we'll get back to you as soon as we can. Thank you.
First of all, on behalf of the board, thank you very much for a very comprehensive report, and thank you here for a very cogent presentation. For me, who has never read anything about utilities, it reminded me of my first Latin class in seventh grade. Okay? So a lot of what I was reading looked like Latin to me. But let me see, and I apologize if my questions sound stupid, which they may be. But it looks to me that you are not able to evaluate the entire, the reasonableness of the entire services, and that means there's about three-point-four million dollars that you're not able to evaluate? Is that correct?
I think that what, I think that what you're referring to is that we didn't benchmark to the percentage of the labor services agreement outside of the trade union folk and whatnot. So, but I think that overall, it generally appears reasonable, and in particular, I think the finding is that with the percentage change from the prior budget to the current budget, it's in line with industry trends. Now, I would, I do want to disclose that we're not evaluating sort of the specific operations to the end. We're not evaluating the organizational structure, the number of staffing, things like that. We're just evaluating, is it reasonable from, you know, the prior year to the current year? And I think our approach or methodology, while though it didn't capture all of the salaries, it captured the vast majority, and also that the percentage increase seemed reasonable. So I would, I would, I would say yes, and I would couch it around that context.
So with respect to our board, you know, we have limited expertise in certain areas, and so we have to bring in experts like you and others that we brought in to provide us with advice. And so what our board's interested is to make sure that the complete report that you provided is the most that we can do to make sure that all of the charges that are being rendered in the district from a utility standpoint are indeed reasonable. Have we done that?
I believe that we've done the best that we could, given the time constraints and the data available to us.
Okay. There's no other experts other than your firm that we should be bringing in to evaluate the three-point-four million dollars that I referred to or anything else?
I'd probably want to confer with my colleagues and get back to you on that.
Okay. I mean, is that a question that's more appropriate for Wendell? I saw he was here.
Wendell Gertner with Public Resource Advisory Group. The reason that we had, or that we recommended that the district engage RefTalis was because under the bond documents and just as your role as board members, you will be setting utility rates, and you have an obligation, legal obligation, to set the rates that are appropriate, fair, also cover your costs and conform with your bond covenants. And as part of that, a big portion of these costs, obviously, are the costs under the labor services agreement. And I think Terry made a good point of, it's very difficult, given the complexity and uniqueness of your utility, to find things that are exact matches. So our biggest concern was when you were presented with the costs, that you had some basis to point to reasonableness as you approved those costs and not just, just flying blind. And obviously, our biggest concern was the costs that are being paid for the work that is being done, is that a reasonable cost? Are you paying, are you not overpaying for those costs? And the big number that Terry pointed out was the overall cost was seventy-six dollars an hour as an all-in cost, which does appear reasonable. Then RefTalis was able to go in and look at the specific operators, because there are a number of different job titles here that you don't see necessarily in other utilities, and kind of was able to benchmark by pulling different data together. The, although they didn't or really couldn't benchmark kind of the senior management or administrative piece of it, that's who we've been interacting with, and we have a sense of their professionalism, if you will, and they're incorporated in that seventy-six-dollar number. So, you know, given the situation and that we want to have this in place as you set the budget next week, this does appear to be a reasonable. I'm not aware of anybody else that could go in and do a deeper dive. I think that as we and RefTalis have been working through the utility operations and, you know, RCS has been very open and transparent, they've shared their modeling, they've shared their, you know, how they come up with their costs and their services, and you can never say that something is exactly right, but we do believe it is reasonable.
So since we brought you to advise us, and we're grateful for bringing in Terry's firm, and we're gonna, we're, it's being recommended that we approve, accept the labor service agreement, is this advice from you to the board that, that we should do that?
We believe you should do it. Obviously, keeping the utility operating is a very important thing for everybody involved, and we are comfortable, based on the work that they've done, that these costs appear reasonable.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from my fellow board members, Mr. Gilzine or General Counsel?
Yes, we would ask that the board, if you're willing to take the recommendation, move to accept the labor services agreement, operational services fee proposed for the fiscal year 2024 with RCS to operate the district's utilities in the sum of thirty-four million, five-hundred-and-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars.
Does that move?
Is there second?
Second.
On favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record, thank you, Bridget. Let the record reflect, passage unanimously. Wendell, I want to thank you and your firm and Terry's firm for excellent work on something that we needed outside expertise on. Thank you very much.
Today is my pleasure as administrator of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District to present the fiscal year 2024 budget for public inspection. Over the last three months, countless hours have been poured into developing a quality proposal that prioritized the needs of our taxpayers, guests, SIF Todd employees, and everyone who works throughout the district, including cast members. I'd like to thank Susan, our comptroller, and her dedicated finance team for working diligently to produce our budget. Would also like to thank Prag, along with district staff, for their contributions to this budget. The feedback from individual department leaders have been vital to ensuring the mission of this district moves forward while our transition continues. I am grateful for their work and dedication. Today's budget presentation will be much more detailed than in the past. We will highlight the elimination of inappropriate spending and share information about strategic investments the district is making for the future. You'll see that we are spending regrettable legal fees to defend lawsuits brought by Disney. Pursuant to the advice of a former Supreme Court Justice, we are incurring legal fees to protect the district's constitutional rights related to the eleventh-hour agreements that Disney created. We are also spending legal fees to create new governance policies for the district because none of these existed before. Without these legal fees, saving presented today would have been much more greater, and I'll explain as I continue my report. The old Rudy, Rudy Creek Board authorized expenses that our new board would never approve. Here are a couple examples. Former board members and staff, including retirees, receive annual passes and other exclusive perks for Disney properties. They also receive deep discounts on Disney merchandise and Disney cruises, which were reimbursed by the district. Further, the district paid for their previous administrator CFO private golf outings and VIP tickets to Orlando City Soccer Club matches. All of these perks were provided at the expense of the taxpayers, to the tune of over two-point-five million dollars annually. Needless to say, we have eliminated these inappropriate perks from our budget. Though the elimination of these inappropriate perks and despite the Disney-induced legal fees, we were able to provide a savings while making new investments that will benefit the district long-term. With a new budget that promotes financial fiscal stewardship with the hundreds of dedicated district employees, we are making the necessary changes to ensure operations run smoothly on a daily basis. Our employees deserve to know that their work is seen and supported. I thank them for their dedication to our mission. From emergency response to water quality to planning and engineering, work at the district is running smoothly. Our budget outlays emphasize that work will continue to remain on three main components. These are ensuring the highest caliber of public safety, providing fiscal stewardship, establishing a pathway for sustainable growth as we look forward to the future of our region. Prior to evaluating the detailed outlays of each department, I'd like to discuss the highlighted components. First, public safety. Public safety is paramount to the district operation. Every taxpayer, guest, employee, and cast member should feel safe on district property. Our budget makes enhancements to ensure that safety. We fully fund the newly established contract for our union fire department. Shamefully, the previous board allowed their contract to lapse five years. We were able to provide raises to our first responders, bringing them above regional pay parity. The district also made significant investment in emergency equipments totaling over one-point-three million dollars. In fiscal year 24, the district will accept the delivery of a new heavy rescue squad truck, replace the old rescue truck, and order a replace fire engine. These were priorities of Governor Ron DeSantis when he announced his intent to overhaul the district. They have now been met. Our budget also significantly makes investments in the district internet infrastructure that will improve our 911 communication center. By removing the district from Disney's internet network, every cell phone call to 911 on our property will go directly to the district communication center. As it currently stands, emergency calls are being routed to Orange County Communications, then relayed to our communication center, which can take up to several minutes, squandering valuable emergency situation, valuable time in emergency situations. Even worse, in some cases, calls are being dropped. Just a few days ago, Channel Nine reported the Orange County Sheriff's Office dispatcher picked up approximately eighty percent of calls within ten seconds this past June. This is short of the state guidelines of ninety percent. It further showed that a local woman was caught in a road rage incident, someone shooting at her vehicle struck her boyfriend, she called 911 repeatedly, and it went unanswered. To prevent that from happening here, we must make these adjustments now. Lastly, we will also implement traffic safety enhancements throughout the district. For example, our budget includes two-point-seven million dollars for guardrails throughout the property. We are committed to world-class safety in the district. We will continue to make the necessary investments to properly take care of our taxpayers, neighbors, guests, employees, and cast members. Second, our budget focuses on fiscal stewardship. The budget accounts for the reduction in the millage rate of the district from thirteen-point-nine mils to twelve-point-nine-five mils. The reduced collected revenues by thirteen-point-eight million dollars. I also found additional savings of two-point-eight million by eliminating inappropriate spending, as I mentioned earlier. These reductions, coupled with the unavoidable legal fees because of the Disney lawsuits totaled four-point-five million, would have provided our taxpayers with a total savings over twenty-one million dollars. Instead, it's only sixteen-point-six million, which is disappointing to me as administrator. It should have been more. Despite this reductions and certain legal challenges, the district is still expected to increase proposed operation expenses by two-point-seven percent during fiscal year 24. This is still below the analyzed rate of inflation, which is three-point-three year over year for 23. It is well below the record inflation rate experienced throughout the country since January of 2022. This is a very healthy financial picture. Our budget keeps spending under control while still meeting service obligation. I believe efforts like this that grow the size of our tax base without increasing spending are setting the district up for a sound fiscal future. Third, our budget is forward-looking, aimed at a pathway for sustainable growth, especially as it relates to water quality. As such, our budget invests heavily into improving drainage infrastructure, allotting three million dollars for structured repairs. Additionally, we will finish construction of the new environmental science lab, which allows for water quality sampling and a regional threat mitigation. Once again, on behalf of the four hundred employees of the district, the three-hundred-and-fifty-five individual taxpayers, and the tens of millions of guests that visit the district annually, thank you for this opportunity. With that, we'll begin our budget presentation. Let's see, first slide. Uh-oh. Oh, this doesn't work. This slide shows a summary of our assessed values and the revenue that would have been generated using the previous millage of thirteen-point-nine compared to the lower millage of twelve-point-nine-five. This one adjustment resulted in a collection revenue reduction of thirteen-point-eight million. We are also itemizing the inappropriate spending of the previous board. These items were removed for fiscal year 24 and creating a savings of two-point-eight million, resulting in a total savings of sixteen-point-six million. Next slide. Here, we can see the true itemized costs of the Disney-induced expenses, which are budgeting over five million dollars. We also have required reporting as mandated by Florida law and additional fees for consultants to ensure that we're meeting our obligations. You'll also see here the significant investments we're making in the future of the district. This include establishing a new internet network for the benefit of our 911 response times. We are also including resources to significantly upgrade our security systems around the parking garages. Our current system is at the end of life from a technology perspective. While we are undertaking these upgrades, we are also looking to expand the use of the security cameras on district property as well. Once again, we have the guardrail investment, additional increases to fire equipment, and ambulance replacement, along with drainage improvement, which is what, which I previously mentioned. Next slide, please. This slide provided This slide provided financial overview of the proposed millage rate and budget for the general fund and debt service fund. Our general fund, mostly funded by alvarum taxes, the real property and personal property. This slide, as you can see, the property values from the property appraisers office from both Orange and Osceola Counties. For fiscal year twenty four, the assessed value for the district was fifteen point three billion, which is a one point eight billion increase since fiscal year twenty three. These values are as of January first, twenty twenty three. Total net new additions to the property in Orange County, and they were amounted to two hundred and fifty million. The additions include the Guardians of Galaxy Ride at Epcot, improvement to the Swan Reserve Hotel, the Star Wars Galaxy Star Cruiser Hotel, hotels at the Flamingo Crossing, the Polynesian Check-In Building Rehab. With the assessed value increases, we were able to lower the district's millage rate. Starting with the debt service, we lowered the rate from four point six to three point nine six mils. Even with the reduction, there are no changes to the planned debt service schedule, so annual requirements remain at fifty eight million dollars. For the operated millage rate, we are proposing a millage decrease of eight point nine nine mils. The district does follow the State of Florida TRIM truth in millage process. As such, I am required to inform you about the rollback rate and the percentage increase above that. For fiscal year twenty four, the calculated rollback rate is eight point two six one. The rollback rate is the road is the rate that would generate prior year tax revenues less allowance from new construction. The total millage for fiscal year twenty three is thirteen point nine mils, and in fiscal year twenty four, it's twelve point nine five mils. Next slide, please. This slide depict our revenue budget. With the millage rate of twelve point nine five mils, you can see that our revenues is increasing to one hundred and eighty eight million. This is a nine million dollar increase from fiscal year twenty three. So even though we lowered our millage rate, we're still increasing our ad valorem tax revenues to the additional assessed value we just talked about on the prior slide. The district will see a total increase of eleven million dollars in revenue from one hundred and eighty three million to one hundred and ninety four point five million. You will see an increase in our permanent fees. The district is currently conducting a new fee review, which has not been reevaluated since two thousand and fifteen. We are anticipating raising our permitting fees at the beginning of fiscal year twenty four, so we can appropriately cover our costs. Next slide, please. Taking a look at our expenditures, we have increased of eleven point five million in operating expenditures. Labor is coming in at sixty seven point one million, includes the budgeted personnel annual wage increase as well as new positions. Other expenses, capital outlay has a savings for fiscal year twenty four for the environmental service building that won't be completed before the end of the this year, and the appropriate funds are being rolled over to continue this project. In the non-operating source and uses, you will see a transfer in of three point three million dollars. This is also included in the other expenses above. This reserve can be used to fund certain drainage projects. Debt service is fifty eight point five million, which is the same as prior year. With regards to insurance, we're still waiting for final quotes. This bring us to a total estimated expenditures of one hundred and ninety eight point seven million dollars. Next slide, please. Administration, you'll see an overall department decrease of six percent or four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Notable reduction is to reduce cost of outside services by replacing the Walt Disney World mail service with a new P O box that was costing us thirty thousand dollars a year, removing the publicity and promotional budget for fiscal year twenty four, reducing travel and business to two thousand dollars, and halting the employee pass program for savings of two point five million. In contrast, the department had notable additions as well. Professional services to the department totaled five point seven five million of this amount. Four point five million will be spent on litigation efforts, one point two five in regular legal fees and normal in comparison, and a hundred and ten thousand for legislative reporting as outlined in our charter. Next slide, please. Contracts and procurement, as you can see, the overall cost of this department remains flat year over year, even in light of adding in addition a new staff member to oversee our new buy local program. The saving stems from the retirement of a tenured employee. The buy local program will give an advantage to bidders within the central Florida region. Okay, next slide, please. This is a newly created department. As I mentioned, we're prioritizing public safety. As such, I have reorganized some of our security apparatus. Ms. Tanya Naylor is our new head of security and emergency management. She was previously housed in the fire department. Her labor and dollar transfers to this uh from the fire department. We are also creating an additional position for a security coordinator, which will allow for system redundancy if one person is unavailable. Separately from Tanya, we're spending two point three million on outside services. Of that, eight hundred thousand is to cover security at the admin and other buildings across the district, and two point two million is used to cover security in our parking garages. Next slide, please. Finance. Overall, this department will see a decrease of sixteen percent. We have reduced the number of people in the department. Additionally, fees for outside consultants such as Prague have been added to the budget in addition in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. We've also shifted risk management into our human resources department for a cost savings of a hundred and ninety one thousand dollars. Next slide, please. As mentioned in my overview, the district is investing in life safety upgrades to reduce the nine one one response time and allocating one million dollars to create a standalone internet network. Additionally, the network will allow for enhanced security for our internal I T systems. The district is investing one million dollars for new communication network and completely separating from the Walt Disney World system that exists on property. By removing the district from the Disney infrastructure, we're ensuring long-term longevity as an independent oversight government. Professional services also in increased due to the network redesign and the nine one one enhancement. We are also receiving an additional capital outlay to upgrade security cameras and software in the parking garage in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We are reaching the end of life on our security equipment in the garages, and it is time to initiate replacement. The equipment is about seven years old and is now out of warranty and will be more expensive to fix than to replace. We are also expanding the use of security cameras across the district property. Additionally, we have some unfilled position in fiscal year twenty three, which are contributing to some of the savings costs. Operation supplies decreased due to the end user device refresh cycle. Fiscal year twenty three includes equipment purchases, which we did not have this year. We also saw significant repair and maintenance for our new Motorola cybersecurity system for a total of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This slide shows the anticipated capital outlay of one point five million plus planned work expense of another one hundred and thirty one thousand for a total of one point six million for a plethora of I T security projects across the district. Capital and planned work are budgeted each year to meet these needs. Includes in the list are security upgrades for four hundred and forty four thousand dollars, server switch routers, and U P S upgrades of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Next slide, please. Some of our major adjustments we'll see in the H R budget are changes in the headcount and the number of employees in the department. This include additional headcount for the safety and risk management position. We are also leaving certain unfilled positions unfilled, carrying those costs from fiscal year twenty three to twenty four. We also saw a reduction in executive physicals, which saved us eighty seven thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty four. We will see an increase in the budget due to operating supplies increase, which will increase the replacement of safety equipment in and around uh around the amount of twenty one thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Oh, yeah. Public affairs. This year, we created a new public affairs department. We're thrilled to have our new staff, including our chief of staff, Ms. Paula Hoyzington, and our new external affairs director, Ms. Brandy Brown. We are also expanding our record management staff to accommodate the influx of public records requests within with the reorganization. We also transferred an administrative assistant to this department. Additional headcount, uh, which totaled five hundred and forty four. Administrative admin transferred from uh for eighty three thousand. Additional support for record management, sixty thousand, and we removed the public publicity and promotion um for a savings of forty five thousand. Next slide, please. Okay. On this side, you'll see major increases to our building and safety department is for updating and printing the new Epcot building codes. The district undertakes these revisions once every three years. The costs for the overall typesetting costs and printing of fifty copies of each code. The code will be available for customers to download via the I C C website again, same as the last edition. Unfilled positions in F Y twenty three shows the labor increase in F Y twenty four, not necessarily the additional headcount. Labor increased due to the existing open positions. Positions changed. One transfer from environmental science of paramedics added. Employee relations due to physicals not being completed in fiscal year twenty twenty three. Wardrobe expenses transferred from the facility department for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, next slide. Okay. This slide highlights our capital project for fiscal year twenty four. This demonstrates the district investment to the in the fire department equipment quality to provide excellent response time and service. Next slide, please. Environmental science. Labor increase due to one position and one transferred position from building and safety. Operating supplies due to the additional chemicals for lakes and mosquitoes. Outside services decreased due to the watershed postponement until fiscal year twenty twenty five. And la- uh, lastly, on this slide, capital outlay fluctuate based on needs. Next slide. This slide shows the capital investment the district is making to the environmental science department to keep the equipment refreshed regularly and in good condition, so the department can make quality services, provides quality services. Capital outlay fluctuate based on need. This is on the next slide. All right. Almost there. Okay. We have some reduction in expenditures of the facilities and operation. Open position in fiscal year twenty three, equipment rentals increase in the leased vehicles, gasoline and fuel costs increase due to uh up thirty seven thousand. Operating supplies increase due to the buyer hazard waste program, sixty four thousand. Outside services and fee transferred to the security and emergency department, two point three million. Outside services and fees, uh, Florida Department of Transportation I four maintenance contract ended, one million. Wardrobe transferred to the fire department, four hundred and fifty thousand, and planned work building maintenance is on the next slide. Yep. Next slide, please. All right. Drainage, love drainage. Operating supplies increase in the chemical prices for canal weed control went up, uh, seventy nine thousand. Repair and maintenance is determined each year to ensure the structure and condition of the drainage system, which you'll see listed on the next slide. Three point five million dollars will be transferred in from the drainage reserve to costs to cover the cost of a major of the majority of this department. Additionally, drainage repair needs for concrete repairs of four hundred thousand, steel and blast repairs is a two hundred and fifty, two hundred and twenty five thousand. Drainage repairs needed, uh, structured on S four oh five is the largest and can use the drainage fund of three mi- three uh million and fifty thousand dollars. Next slide. Okay. Planning and engineering. Labor increased due to the traffic operator. Professional service increased due to the urban planner contract and drainage model, two hundred and fifty thousand for urban plan, one point five million for the drainage model. Repairs and maintenance service decreased due to the option to do less paving rehab. Next slide. A list of planned works for roadways. Most of these are listed in the new investments. Annual maintenance to keep up roads in excellent shape as well as traffic signals and signage. Next slide, our fund balance. Okay, next slide. All right, our twenty twenty four budget timeline. In sum, I presented the proposed millage rate of twelve point nine five mils. This is what will be shown on the trims to each taxpayer. The trim will advertise the first public hearing. We will continue to work on the budget, tracking and updating our actuals for fiscal year uh twenty three as well as refining our fiscal twenty four numbers. We are required to hold two public hearings after five P M, and those are being scheduled for September thirteenth and September twenty seventh. Those meeting notices will be available on our website in the near future. We are making strategic investments across the district to meet our goals. We are also focused on bringing responsible governance to protect the taxpayer resources. I look forward to working with the board for a successful fiscal year ahead. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for questions from our board related to the budget presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gilzine, for that very thorough report. I want want the public to understand that this is not the first time that the board has seen these PowerPoint presentation or the first time that we've seen the budget. You'll find that we will post a very comprehensive budget, not just the the PowerPoint presentation. I know myself, I spent over six hours pestering Susan uh on four or five different days and a number of hours with our C E O, and I'm told that likewise, my fellow board members spent significant amount of time discussing the budget with both Susan and Mr. Gilzine. So what's important for you all to know that um we've asked a lot of questions. We've made a lot of adjustments to the budget based on one-on-one input between board members and Susan and Mr. Gilzine. But having said that, are there any comments or questions from my fellow board members?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to echo your your thanks and gratitude to Mr. Gilzine and also to Susan. I greatly appreciate the time that you spent with me individually, uh, going through the line-by-line items and answering my questions. Uh, I am uh very, very pleased to see the commitment to public safety, uh, which has always been a priority of this board um and of this new administration. I I just wanted to go through just a couple of things, just to put on the record for the public. Um, I know it's not reflected in the budget because we don't take delivery for a period of thirty to thirty-six months, but my understanding is that we are signing an L O I to order three new frontline fire engines. Um, so just because they're not seen in this budget doesn't mean that they're not actually being ordered and are actually being manufactured, and we anticipate taking delivery of those sometime in the twenty twenty six timeframe. Is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, and then I'd also just like to thank and point out, uh, many people probably missed it. There's been a lot going on, but at one of our earlier board meetings, I think in the April timeframe, uh, we had a presentation on the guardrails, uh, which again, uh, you know, kind of a rote uh governmental process that most people wouldn't even observe or notice the the guardrails. But um, this needs to be the safest place on earth. It is, uh, it is, but we need to keep it that way. And bringing up those guardrails to the F dot standards from the substandard condition that they're in right now uh is a very important. uh, is a very important investment for our public safety, for our visitors, for our guests, and for their families. Uh, and then the only, the only other comment I'd like to make, uh, well, two more comments. Number one, for the public, uh, this budget will not be final and will not be approved until our September, uh, trim hearings. So I'd like to, uh, invite you and encourage you to please, uh, email us at our district email addresses, which is on the district website. Uh, your thoughts, concerns, uh, suggestions, anything that you'd like to see in the budget, anything that, uh, you don't see, or questions that you have. I'd, I'd really like to get public feedback on the budget. Uh, and I'm glad we have, uh, about a month, uh, left for you all to do that, uh, if not a little bit more time. And then I, just to address the, you know, the employee pass issue, uh, I'd just like to, again, echo the comments, uh, that were made earlier, uh, by Chairman Garcia. But I also want to, uh, say that this is part of the budget process, and so we're still in the budget process. And so what I would like to see as part of this budget process going forward is, you know, open dialogue, communication, and negotiation with all of our employees on what is an option that, that is, uh, legal, that is ethical, that is something that we can do the right way, uh, best government practices. But I don't want our employees to feel left out by this budget, and you won't be. Uh, and there's time for us to have that conversation. So I would like to see that happen and, um, and I'd like to encourage the employees to participate in that and, and Mr. Gilzine to lead that, as I know you are, and you will. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Supervisor Onks. Are there other comments from my fellow board members? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would just like to echo, uh, the comments and thanks to Mr. Gilzine and Ms. Higginbotham for taking the time to, uh, go through, uh, all of my questions. I'm, uh, a big believer, uh, somebody I have a lot of respect for says, uh, when you watch the pennies, the dollars take care of themselves. We're here, I think, you're watching the pennies and the dollars. And I, I think what you'll see for the public, uh, this is a lean and mean operation, and it's getting leaner and meaner. And, uh, I think we're making excellent effort to be good stewards of, uh, the public's money, and I want to thank you for that. Uh, one thing I want to highlight, uh, is, uh, you know, the in, the investment in, uh, in drainage and updating the drainage system and modeling that system going forward. Uh, you know, before, I don't think it's well-understood. Before this district was anything else, it was a drainage district. We've got a hundred and thirty-seven miles of, uh, of canals. It's a, at a sort of a vital linchpin, uh, in the drainage system uh, that really underlies Orange and Osceola County. It's, this is truly a safety and resiliency issue. And this, I think, uh, significant investment going forward is going to update that system, uh, uh, well, and I think serve the public well going forward and will, uh, be, create some long overdue, uh, improvements, uh, going forward. So I'm excited to see that. And, uh, I would just, I guess, compliment Supervisor Onks for, um, emphasizing, uh, the guardrail project, I think. Absolutely, that's a big, long overdue, and I'm glad to see it, uh, done going forward. So thank you for, for emphasizing that and, and thank the district, uh, or thank everyone. So anyway, uh, with that all said, I'm supportive and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much for those comments, Vice Chair Barakat. Any other comments from my fellow directors?
Yeah, just, um, uh, two, uh, relatively quick comments. First of all, been very impressed with the diligence, the level of work done in a very short period of time and the quality of the output with regards to the budget and the results generally. I mean, it's quite impressive. And the handle that, uh, uh, that you and Susan and our folks seem to have on, um, really where the pennies are even. Um, the second thing is, I think it's important for people to recognize that this board actually has, has its goal to be very pro employee. Um, this Disney situation with the Disney passes is a challenging one to work out so that it's ethical, so that it's fair, uh, and so on. And I guarantee you, the board will work through that to come up with the best possible, uh, recommendation and outcome.
Thank you very much for your comments, Supervisor Perry. Any other comments from fellow board members? A hearing none. Uh, the only observation I'll share with you is we'll move to new business. Item eight point one on the agenda. On the agenda is a proposal from Professor Donald J. Koshin, one of several experts our board is using to ensure that the district is best positioned to serve the citizens, employees, and guests of Orange and Osceola Counties. Professor Koshin, the executive director of the Law and Economics Center at the Scalia Law School at George Mason University, is an eminent constitutional scholar who also specializes in property and administrative law. Specifically, he will advise the board on the governance structure of the district. Under the old Reedy Creek Improvement Act, which was repealed earlier this year, the district was effectively controlled by Disney for more than fifty-six years. To be sure, its governance structure was lo- unlike anything else in the United States. With its own government, which it ruled with few external impediments, Disney, a mega corporation, virtually had its own kingdom. But certainly not everything about it was magical. Though the kingdom generated economic growth for central Florida, it created a myriad of financial, legal, urban planning, and governance issues, some of which were documented over twenty years ago by a professor in a book titled Married to the Mouse. In just six months on the job, with the help of independent experts, this board has discovered many more issues. We've already addressed several of the most glaring through the adoption of new policies and practices, namely focused on transparency and accountability. To not only continue much-needed reform, but also guarantee that all remaining issues are uncom- uh, are uncovered, it is incumbent on the board to enlist additional experts. As such, Professor Koshin will examine the highly unusual governance structure that administered the former Reedy Creek Improvement District for over a half century. He will then explain the financial, legal, and governance issues it created for central Florida and further provide recommendations for the reform to finally and rightfully prioritize the interests of the citizens, employees, and guests of central Florida before those of Disney. And, um, with that, is there a motion that we approve the proposal on the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll, I'll third, uh, and just add, uh, the, you know, in terms of, uh, the financial terms of the, um, of, of the arrangement, I think, given, um, the professor's, especially considering his, um, eminent expertise in this, in this subject area. I think the overall rates, if you consider the amount of time and the short period of time, uh, that he's going to have to spend doing this work, I think it's very reasonable, the hourly rate ends up being very reasonable, and I think he's, um, the right man for the job, so.
Are there any other comments from my fellow board members?
Yes, Chairman, if I, if I may, um, I hope you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you know, I'm, I'm very pleased about this, uh, proposal. I think, uh, as a elected official in, in Sarasota, I think, I, I cannot underscore how important having proper governance structure is to balance the scales, to ensure that we're serving all of the stakeholders. Um, and, and this is a very unique situation. So, um, I, I'm very, uh, I really appreciate the, the recommendation to bring this forward. I'm very, um, uh, hopeful about the, this, uh, the analysis that they'll provide that will really set this, uh, district up for future and long-term success. So thank you again.
And thank you very much for those comments. We have a motion, a second, and a third. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record reflect the vote passed unanimously. And now we will move to, uh, public hearing, uh, resolution six forty-seven, item number nine point one on the agenda, and I'll turn it over to General Counsel.
Resolution number six four seven, a resolution of Central Florida Tourism Oversight District adopting a procurement policy providing for survivability and effective date. Um, this was a team effort. Uh, want to appreciate, I would say appreciate the work from Mr. Gilzine and Tiffany Kimball and all the other staff members that give input on this. I know this is something that, uh, the board was looking for as far as, uh, additional policies. Um, it's quite unusual for, uh, local government not to have formal policies, uh, on procurement. That's a very important topic, uh, for a local government to have, to ensure that we have uniform procedures, um, and processes to purchase goods and services, to make sure there's a fair process, uh, for those who desire to provide goods and services to the district and to ensure transparency. You know, one of the things that I found sort of unusual is that there wasn't even a process spelled out for, um, people that are submitting bids or proposals to challenge, um, a process for, the procurement process for being unfair potentially. And that's the very standard in local government to give due process. And there wasn't even a process for those were, who were submitting proposals to say, wait a minute, I, I'm not comfortable with the way you went about, um, selecting the recommended bidder here. So we built in a process for that. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gilzine to get into the specifics on some of the programs that he wants to tout that are new for the district. Thank you.
So, thank you, sir. What I'm really excited about is the opportunity to create parameters to support our local businesses, our veteran-owned businesses, and help them succeed in our application and bidding process. What I've come to find out is that a large number of our contracts were going not only out of state, but, um, not only out of this region, but out of state. And we wanted to make a crea- create a fair and equitable process for our local guys. So within our policies, you'll see that the bi-local program that I've hinted over previous meetings is now spelled out in stone. I also want to take the time to thank Tiffany for her hard work. She put in a lot of hours to help us get there. And I, I, I welcome the board's approval on this very important policy.
Uh, any, I know we need to have public comment, isn't that correct? Offered public comment?
Correct, this is a public hearing.
So is there any pop, public comment on this, this policy? Uh, hearing none, are there any comments from my fellow board members? The only thing I'd like to do that, that reinforces what our C E O has just indicated. I want to read to you, uh, it's a lengthy document, but I just want to read to you what is expressly articulated as the purpose and scope of this new policy. Says the purpose and objective of this program is to increase and encourage the participation of veteran small businesses and local businesses to participate in the district's contracting and procurement process and to facilitate a level playing field for such businesses. It is the policy of the district now to afford opportunities to veterans and local businesses to the extent possible or legally permissible in the district's procurement activities. And that's consistent with the culture that our C E O is instilling here in the district, that we are open for business for people and small businesses that have never done business with us. And so we're looking forward to doing business with our lo- local merchants. And I commend you and our General Counsel, Mr. Gil- Gilzine, for bringing this. And I might note, if y'all are keeping score, um, this is the ninth board policy that our board has adopted, uh, since we started work here in six months. And we're going to do more because we're going to bring in new policies consistently to make this an independent governing agency. So, um, with no public comment, uh, is there a motion that we adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. And, um, I see there's no unfinished business or other business on the agenda. Um, is there any such that my fellow board members, Mr. Gilzine or General Counsel want to bring up at this time? Uh, if not, we will stand adjourned. Thank you for co- joining us today.